He told me he was not going to be available when we were setting this all up, but he was the only one who was unavailable for today's date. So I gave him an excuse and told him that we would go without him and he could watch the Zoom later, the recording later. In the meantime, could I request the vice chair to call the rule?
That's you.
Oh. Very new things are happening.
Oh, here. Here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Here.
Shields.
He's not here.
Not here. Raimi here, Walsh.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Angus.
Here. Could you fill out this little here actually? No, 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 here, give me this. This is really what you should have.
I forgot I was the vice chair.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, which everyone has. I would solicit a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Support.
All right, moved by Raimi, seconded by Angus. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll adopt the agenda and next item on the agenda is the training session of ZBA best practices and updated on any case law, which will be presented by Matt Zaleski, who's an attorney from Rosati. What's the second name?
Schultz.
Oh, I know that. Rosati Schultz, who whose entire firm really specializes in municipal laws, the whole gamut of stuff that we as a township have to deal with. So without further ado, I'll turn the session over to Mr. Zaleski and he can proceed.
Well, thank you so much for having me. And I'm trying to figure out, am I going to be able to share my screen here? It looks just got promoted to a panelist. Oh yeah, looks like I can, if that's okay.
And there you have it.
Oh, perfect, because I know that my handout of this presentation is a little bit of an eye test. I probably could have done two slides per page, but. They always hide the presentation. Oh, there we go, slideshow.
There you go.
All right, perfect. Well, yeah, thank you for the introduction and as we were just mentioning a moment ago, planning and zoning is all I do. I've been with the firm for almost eight years now. I've been practicing since 2008. I got my start in the city of Dearborn, their city attorney's office, where I also primarily focused on land use and planning issues and everything related. And then for a period of time, when I was living in Dearborn but not working for them, I also sat on the planning commission for nearly 10 years before I moved to Royal Oak. So I've got experience both as an advisor to these boards, but also as a member, at least of a planning commission. So I have a good idea of what you go through whenever you're working through all your meetings. So I've set this up to be fairly casual and I hope it can be conversational. I am happy to take questions along the way, because you'll see from my handout, I have tons of slides. We're not going to be spending a lot of time on every single topic or reading everything word for word, but I find that, you know, every board that I talk to with this, some version of this training has different interests. And I understand that you've all been on the board for a while, no newcomers. So some of this may be a little basic or a refresher, but you can guide me along as to what it is that you're most interested in. To the extent that I have some case law updates, they're basically built into the presentation. I'll call out some of the recent trends in case law that are driving some of my suggestions. So let's get started, starting with the most basics. If I can get my, there it is, need to move that. We know that the authority to zone and for zoning boards to exist comes from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, your zoning ordinance, and that you're a quasi judicial body. This is a, the zoning board is a fun board to be on because you do have final authority on the issues, most of the issues that you're considering and are only appealable to the circuit court. So under your ordinance, your powers are to hear appeals of administrative decisions enforcing the zoning ordinance, looking at requests for interpretation for the zoning map, granting dimensional non-use variances and other matters that you're called upon. Do you get many appeals or interpretations, mostly variances?
I can only remember one. I can only remember, it was a while ago.
Yeah. Okay. That helps me.
The issue comes up with planning commission decisions. So maybe ask you more about that later.
Well, this isn't the plan.
No, but just.
Work it in there. So I like to start kind of from the end of the process. I like to remind us where our place is as a zoning board in the broader scheme of things and then take a look at what happens after an issue leaves your board with the courts, which then we can go from there and kind of fill in our best practices for building the records that we want to send to the court in the event that your decisions are ever challenged. So the ZBA is very much at the front end of the process. We have our administrative decision or we have a, an ordinance that we need a variance from, and you're the first real line of review here. And then from there, your issue could go anywhere, all the way up to the Michigan Supreme Court. There is an appeal. It's still a little of a questionable thing in the case law as to whether an appeal from the circuit court decision to the court of appeals is an appeal of right or not, but there seems to be an effort to change the rule to make that possible. So, you know, these cases can go on for some time after you see them in the court system. So let's go ahead and start at the end. As I mentioned, your decisions are considered final. There's no other board in this township that can review your decision. The person who's upset has to go straight to the circuit court. In order to challenge the decision, the person has to be a so-called aggrieved party. And so they have to have some sort of harm arising from the decision that you make that's different from similarly situated property owners. And this is becoming, as I'm going to point out, a more important thing for the zoning board to consider based on some changes in the case law. So, not surprisingly, the people who most likely will appeal your decisions are the property owner, maybe a prospective purchaser, prospective tenant, who's going to be building out the property that's the subject of your appeal. And claims that may support the idea that a person is aggrieved is that they participated in your proceedings, that somehow the decision you're making is going to have an effect on their light in air or their view or water runoff, whatever. They've got to have some sort of interest essentially in order to challenge your decision. Historically, claims that have not supported aggrieved party status have been very general claims that I'm a neighbor and I just don't like this variance, or just the fact that they're within the range of people who are entitled to notice within the 300 feet. Courts haven't said that that's automatically something that would give you aggrieved party status to challenge the zoning board's decision. Aesthetic complaints, very general concerns about traffic, economic impact, things like that. So for the longest time, the universe of people who really could challenge one of your decisions in court has been understood to be quite narrow. I mean, it really does typically come down to the property owner or the, somebody who has an interest in the subject of the property in front of you, or some neighbor who can really show a specific potential harm from the variance. And also historically, this was not something that we typically would think too much about at the zoning board level, because as the zoning board, you're not making decisions for the court as to who is an aggrieved party. Obviously, that's a decision that the circuit court makes, whether this person has the standing to bring an appeal in the circuit court. But a few years ago, we had the case of Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance versus Sagatuck Township, where the Supreme Court changed things up a little bit. And to this day, we don't know exactly how far this is going to go, or if it really is as big of a sea change as some of us thought it might be, you know, a couple of years ago. What happened in that case, just the long and short of it for purposes of what we're talking about here, is in part of the case, the issue was whether the people appealing the zoning board decision to the court were aggrieved parties. And not only did the court reformulate what an aggrieved party is, but they also said in a little bit of what could be considered dicta, that the zoning board is the one that needs to develop the record to determine whether a person is aggrieved or not. You don't make the decision as to whether the person is aggrieved, but it's part of the factual record. So not only is the, was the Supreme Court looking at your role as developing the record of the appeal itself and all the facts related to whether the particular approval should be granted, but also the court was saying that it's really for the zoning board in the first instance to take a look at whether a person who may end up bringing a lawsuit would be aggrieved. So what this means is, when you have a person coming to the podium, obviously you know that the applicant or somebody with a really clear interest in the application may eventually be a person who would sue, but when you have members of the public out there who are threatening or unhappy with whatever decision you might be making, it's useful to think about whether those people might be among the universe of people who would end up suing. I'm trying to see where my next slide that I'm looking for here. Maybe that slide maybe disappeared. All right, just was expecting another slide behind this one.
You're right where you're supposed to be.
Yeah, exactly. But, no, so, you know, there was just this point about the zoning board being the one developing the record on the aggrieved party status is, when you have a person who's coming, you might, and it looks like they might be yearning to challenge whatever decision you make, you may want to elicit some facts from them to figure out exactly what is their interest in this appeal. It might be self-evident if they're a neighbor and it's very clear in their conversation why they believe they're going to be affected, but if it's somebody who's coming in just saying, oh, I don't like gas stations or whatever, you know, how is that affecting them personally? Because if those are the people who end up filing the appeal, the court may very well be looking to your record to determine if that person had established the groundwork, the factual basis for aggrieved party status at the meeting. And it is possible that the issues relating to aggrieved party status will start coming back down to zoning boards on remand. And it's just not something that we traditionally think about. So in light of that decision, it's worth considering.
Ask you a question. Yeah. What we've been taught before is the applicant is actually responsible for providing the data to support that decision. In this case, is that then flipped, that it's now up to the ZBA to prove that the person potentially is aggrieved rather than the person themselves identifying why they are aggrieved?
I wouldn't go quite that far. I think that to the extent that you're engaging in your fact finding role, it's fair to say that maybe you should ask the questions of the person who's trying to claim some sort of grievance here, but at the end of the day, it would still be that person who has to establish it. And so, you know, in the Sagatuck Dunes case, part of the test for an aggrieved party included, well, did they participate in the proceedings? Did they submit a letter, et cetera? But then when it came down to the issues of the special circumstances, the special damages different from the others that are similarly situated, that's where there was some question. And so I think if somebody's up there, it's, no, it's definitely not your responsibility to offer the facts for them, but.
Was that case one of those riparian rights cases?
It was a huge development out there. There was an environmental group that was really leading it, that was trying to preserve the coastline, but it was huge, huge housing development.
Okay.
So looking at, once we get past this issue of the standing, the aggrieved party status, appeals of your decisions are not like normal lawsuits. They tend to move much quicker, they're much more structured, and they don't involve all the extra steps of a regular lawsuit. So when I get a zoning board appeal, come into my office, the first thing that happens is I get with the township and I ask for the record. And we put together the certified record for the court. So that's going to be your minutes, it's going to be all the application materials, anything that was submitted during the hearing, your, the relevant ordinances, any emails that might have gone around. So everything that you see in touch is going to be in that certified record. And that's ultimately what we're saying to the court is what the court should look at for this appeal. Then after that, there's briefing, the appellant files a brief, township files a brief, there's a reply brief, and then usually there is a hearing. And again, it moves fairly quickly. There's no discovery, no depositions, it's purely on the record review of your decision. Sometimes there's argument over whether the record is too big or too small, whether things should have been included or not, but that always gets worked out.
So I remember there's a timeframe that they have to file the appeal.
Yes. So it's typically, I want to say it's 21 days unless the ordinance provides otherwise. Some, I think are 30.
I think it's 30.
I think it's 30.
But it's, it's not so much the 30 days, it's the date from which it runs. And my recollection is that it starts running at the time the written notice of the decision is given to the applicant. Or 30 days after the record is complete.
The minutes are approved. So I actually have a loss, I have a case on this very specific topic right now, where not every zoning board issues both a separate decision and the minutes. Some just do the minutes, but.
Well, let me stop you there, because this is what we do here. You can comment on it if you want, and this was based upon some advice given to us earlier years ago. As chairperson, I generally prepare two decisions, written decisions, one for the applicant, one denying it. With a block in there, it says with conditions or without conditions if it's granted. And it's signed and dated that day.
Yeah.
And what it says is that the applicant either has granted the variance with or without conditions, or that the request for the variance is denied, and in each case, and it simply says for the reasons stated on the record. Is that sufficient?
Usually, usually the order, when there, when there are those letters, I think my experience with communities that do it that way, it usually comes a few days later and incorporates the motion language. But I can see that, I mean, because ultimately it's going to be followed up by the minutes.
Yes, but it's the time for filing.
Right.
The circuit court.
Right. But the decision ultimately is the perfected in the minutes. I mean, I think my, my advice would be that the order should include, should restate the motion.
Can't do it. I mean, Matt, it's impossible, you know.
Well, a day of, certainly, certainly, day of, you certainly can't.
That's the whole point, but although. Yeah, because you can't do anything else.
Yeah. I, I have, I mean, obviously, I have not seen a case with that particular issue. That's a very specific issue. The one I'm dealing with was a situation where the written order was issued after the meeting, but before the minutes were approved. And then the minutes were approved at the next meeting, which may have even been a couple of months later, because I think they may have had a meeting that was canceled. And this applicant ended up appealing based on the minutes. And there is a spot on case from the court of appeals that says that that 30-day appeal window runs from the date of the order or the date of the minutes, whichever is first. So he.
That's what I was basing, well, not what we were told, but, but I read the thing at some point years ago, and I, it didn't say it had to actually restate everything.
Yeah.
It just had to say that what the decision is.
No, I agree. I don't think that there's anything that does affirmatively say that it has to. I mean, I think it's ideal that it would, but if you're issuing it the day of, it's kind of like a court, when they issue an order the day of for the reasons on the record and then it is in the transcript, but.
Well. Yeah, and my only final comment is, as you indicated, the minutes might not be approved for us, literally for months, because going from meeting to meeting, we don't always have meetings.
Well, in that case, I like, doing the orders is a great idea, because otherwise that appeal period just keeps getting kicked down the road.
Exactly. It's never, it's only have, we've only been sued twice that I can remember. We, I remember the last one, but in any event, I'm wandering. Go ahead.
No, this is, this is, I'm enjoying this. So, and by the way, in that, in that case, we have, we're going up to the court of appeals now. The circuit court did agree with us that the order was first, and he kept claiming, oh, but it wasn't official until the minutes were approved, but no, that's not how the rules are. So, so we're still good on that. So the court is supposed to be deferential to you when it's reviewing your decision. I'm finding that's decreasingly the case, especially with some of the newer and younger judges that are coming in that maybe don't quite have the same appreciation for administrative law or municipal government. I'm not sure what it is, but we are seeing judges being a little less deferential. But really, if it's, if the judge is doing their job correctly, then the standard of review for your decision is whether it complies with the constitution, laws of the state, based on proper procedure, and most importantly, is it supported by competent material, substantial evidence on the record. So that's really where all that certified record material is going to come into play. And a lot of the advice I'm going to be giving down the road here in this presentation is going to be keyed in on satisfying that element, because the constitution, laws of state, I mean, that's rarely ever an issue. Proper procedure, if your notice is good and you followed your rules, everything's fine. And then the fourth piece about the reasonable exercise of discretion kind of collapses into the competent material, substantial evidence issue. If you have one, you probably have the other. So substantial evidence, we say in the law, is more than a scintilla. It's always a fun word, but less than a preponderance. And if we tried to visualize that, you know, we kind of know in the criminal context, beyond a reasonable doubt is a very strong standard. I think most people understand the concept of preponderance little more than 50%. Scintilla is way down at the bottom, that's just a little bit of evidence, and substantial evidence is somewhere between, basically. So substantial evidence does not have to be a preponderance. It does not have to be a 50% plus one type of situation. When the court is looking at the appeal and deciding it, can either affirm your decision, reverse it, modify it, or remand it for further proceedings. Usually remand happens if the court finds that the record is inadequate, if there isn't enough there for the judge to figure out why the zoning board made the decision that it did, or if the motion is inadequately detailed. We'll talk more about that. So as I mentioned, like on that issue of the aggrieved party status, that's a question of law and jurisdiction, where that's not a decision that you, as the zoning board, are expected to make, even if the Supreme Court might be opening the door for a role on the fact finding. So the ZBA, the court isn't looking to the ZBA's decisions on any questions of law. And, you know, this comes into play sometimes, because especially if you get somebody coming in with some sort of a faith-based use or something, the first thing the applicant wants to do is claim that you're violating the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act, or you're committing and taking or whatever, and they, they want the zoning board to be, you know, making these decisions, but that's, that's simply not what's really before you and the court isn't going to defer to any decisions, one way or the other, of the board on those legal questions, but it's just the administrative question. So getting back to that idea of the substantial evidence, so it is certainly possible in some instances where if you have a robust record and a close call type of issue, that either the for or against decision on the application could be the right one. It is possible that you have two competing outcomes that are supported by substantial evidence. And when that happens, the court isn't supposed to decide the different outcome that could have happened just because the judge would have, if the judge was sitting on the zoning board. Ideally, that's how it's supposed to go. Any questions on that appeal process at this point?
You mentioned the burden of proof, at least with regards to the appellate view. What about, or, yeah, but what about just the idea of the burden of proof? I've never actually seen it stated, but I'm all, I've always been on the assumption that the appellate bears the burden of proof for the variance in any case.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And I think I sneak that in somewhere later down the road here, but yeah, there is, yeah, there, I have a standard case citation for that proposition that I drop in all the time. And so whether it's in front of this board or the courts later down the road, it is the applicant that bears the burden of proof.
Out of curiosity, what percentage of ZBA decisions go to the circuit court?
Well, that's a fantastic question. I have no idea of a scintilla. They're really, it's, it's pretty rare, unless you have a zoning board, which clearly you are not one of them, that is just perpetually making light records. I do have a community I work with, you know, as in a litigation capacity, where I, they've hired me to do their appeals, and boy, do I get them. But I've also offered to do this training for them, but they haven't mentioned yet. So, so I do occasionally get the community with, with a lot of them, but most communities, they can go years without seeing one. Just to have in the back of your mind as well, other threats that may come along. Just to have in the back of your mind as well, other threats that may come along legally from your decisions, the most common one be, is a takings claim where. Of course, the idea is that the regulation that's being enforced and you're not varying from is causing the. Property owner to lose the use of their property, or at least lose some portion of the use or the value, and so they'll claim a regulatory uh taking. If you're sitting here thinking in the back of your head, well, gee, if we deny this variance, maybe there's some, some merit to the applicant saying that he's. Got no other options. Well, you know, you don't necessarily want to sit here saying, yeah, we're going to commit a taking if we rule against you. But it, it doesn't hurt to have that in, in the back of your mind. Is, is this person really being um?
Like said, he couldn't build on it with.
Yeah, not build a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes.
That would have been, that would have been just nothing.
Yeah.
He wouldn't have been able to do anything.
Yeah, so that's perfect. Yeah, so sometimes it's just impossible and variance is the only choice.
It may be, but on the other hand. The way I analyze it also on the other side. Well, you can't build it, but that's too bad. Uh, it's one of these situations where somebody bought a lot and the, the seller actually told them. You know, you have to go to the zoning board because you're not going to be able to fit it.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, you know, it makes you stop the thing.
We're going to talk about self-creed hardship a little bit more later here too, so that's always a fun topic. So that, that can be in the back of your head. Um, not uncommon to see an equal protection claim brought, well, oh, you granted this variance for somebody else down the road or. You know, some zoning board eight years ago granted a, a similar variance, so they'll, they'll try to claim uh discriminatory treatment. Uh, a, a, and you, I see this come up. It is very common to see. Equal protection claims raised. I also, it's very common for me to see zoning boards talk about. Being concerned about whether their decisions are creating precedent that could be setting up an equal protection claim down the road. Yeah, my advice on that is always each matter that comes in front of you is unique. And it's based on its own unique property, uh circumstances, its own unique facts. I mean, sure, I, it's possible that if you have two pretty much identical claims and you approve one and deny another, maybe it is a sign of inconsistent application, but. Always be looking at the facts. Is there something different about? Case number two that would differentiate.
We do talk about that and, and Bob always reminds us that each, each. Case is different, which he's right.
Yeah.
But, but you're, you're also always concerned that down, you're trying to be fair, that's all.
The, the other thing is too, especially if you're dealing with, with variances in a. Especially commercial variances uh in business districts or whatnot. Uh, yeah, there's a case out in the Western District where it dealt with fast food restaurants and it was a McDonald's. That wanted to come in to, I don't remember what community it was, but um. The, the board in that case had recently approved another drive-through restaurant just down the street. Uh, and it all ended up hinging at, it was traffic. Traffic was the main reason. Uh, for the denial of, of the McDonald's as opposed to the other one. And McDonald's said, oh, my gosh, you just approved this other one and you weren't concerned about traffic. But the court bought the argument that, you know what, at the time that first one came in, the traffic study supported that it wasn't going to be a problem. But this other one would be tip it over the balance. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, when you're looking for, for something unique about. Number two or number three that comes down the road, it's very possible, especially in a commercial area, that concerns that didn't exist earlier. Are now being implicated by um a new proposal. Also, very common claims are procedural due process, uh if, or hasn't followed proper procedures. Uh, obviously, you're never going to run into that one because you're, you are, right? And then substantive due process, uh, just uh claiming that. The application of, of regulations is arbitrary and capricious. In practice, due process claims tend not to. Get very far because if they're a first-time applicant, they don't have a protected property right in the permit. You've got discretion to make the decision that you make. All right, so that by way of, of kind of foundation of what happens after the zoning board gets us now into the nuts and bolts of. Your procedures and tips for conducting your meetings and crafting records. Uh, that the, that the court will like if we ever have to get into that situation. So we know that you've got a five-member board, so a quorum is three people. Uh, if you don't have a quorum, you cannot take any official action other than to adjourn uh the appeals and close the meeting essentially. You know, technically you could, you know, as long as you're in the open, you could have some. Side discussions, I, but it's not recommended. I mean, you, you, you can't do anything to make a decision.
Our practice, Matt, has been. When we only have three people sitting instead of the full five. Before we actually open the public hearing, we give the applicant the. Uh, choice of whether he or she wants to proceed. Uh, there's nothing in our rules on it, but it's a matter of uh sort of courtesy of anything wrong with it.
That's a very common practice. Uh, throughout my career, I've had a number of boards that observe that. I'm not aware of any reason why you can't. Because you're, you're, I, I think it is a courtesy. You're saying, look, we don't have a full board today. There's already the option to adjourn. Uh, you know, the, the board could do it itself and it's just, it was a voluntary adjournment, so, yeah, no, I don't think any.
Of course, then, then it comes to. The perpetual question that I've had to deal with more than you folks have. If we adjourn a hearing. Do they have to pay another fee? And. I've been told that is, if we don't open the public hearing, we can just put it over. Uh, to another date. You got any comment on that?
Yeah, so tha- that comes up too. Uh, so. If, yeah, if, if, if the meeting has happened. And you, you've, you've opened the meeting and it's been agreed to adjourn the public hearing. Since that's on the record. Don't think you have to go back through and do the three hundred foot notice and everything that the fee would be supporting. I think that it's a good practice to do it. But this, this comes up quite a bit, um.
Well, there's money involved because.
Mm-hmm.
There's money, they have to pay us and they have to pay the printing or the publication fee and that sort of stuff.
Right.
So I don't know, but that's what we've done in the past. Any comment from? Any comment from the Board of Trustees on that? Since you guys are going to have to pay the bill.
How often does it happen?
It does happen. Uh, I would say in the last two years, we've offered it. Once or twice.
It's, it's been two times that I can recall in the six years I've been doing it.
Six years? Yeah, it does happen, but.
Say, use your judge.
Pardon?
I would say use your judge.
Well, it's not a judgment so much, it's just uh, it's giving the applicant the option because, you know, they're, they're lacking, you know, potential votes. Uh, in other words, they gotta convince the three people hundred percent their position before they get anything.
I thought you were asking whether they should be charged a fee again.
Charge the fee if it gets put over. See, we adjourn it.
And we, we've been saying they don't get charged a fee if it's not put over because of our failure to have a quorum.
Oh, well, no, it's not a quorum. We do have.
Oh, I don't mean that, right, failure to have a full board.
Have a full board, yeah.
Yeah, that does basically become a policy decision as to whether the township wants to charge the fee again or not.
And no, we haven't. Right, and I think that's.
Well, that, that, I, I've been told by staff that we don't have a choice, that we have to charge.
I think you and I had this discussion before.
We did. And I don't know, know what the answer was at the, at the end, but I was told there's distinction. Somewhere between adjourning it before or after the public hearing is, is opened. And I've been told once, and the problem with the, the, I, I understand sort of, the problem with putting over it after the public hearing is already. Taken, is already begun, is that the second time around, you may, there, there is likely to be additional evidence. So.
Yeah.
I, I guess, just reading out of it, the second bullet talks about three members to take. Action, if I recall correctly, it takes. Three to say yes, or three to, but I'm reading this, and does it take three to say no? So if you only have three, that's a quorum, but if the vote is two to one.
Then that's. And that is a denial.
Right. Because you have to have an affirmative vote of three members.
But you can deny with less than three. I'm, I'm just trying to read the bullet. It says, take a final action on that, or to me, that includes denial. And if it takes three to deny, then a two-to-one vote means you've got to bring it back until you have more members.
No, it's denial. That's Robert's rules, I think.
Well. Yeah. You know, it's, yeah. Under Robert's rules, the default would be, you know, if it's two to one, then that would be action, but here your, your rules are saying that. A can, the vote of three members is required to take final action. And a dis, a denial is a final action. So if you only have three members and it's two to one, I think there's an argument there, it's not a final. Exactly.
I can see that.
Well, but that's what I'm getting back to.
Then we have to pay a fee for that.
Well, I'm getting back to, it's, to a certain extent, in our benefit if there's less than five. At a certain point to say, not even just that, because if it takes three to go either way.
Right.
No, I don't think, I, I will.
Again, I don't know, it's.
But no, I, I, I think I would be inclined to go in that direction, so you would need a three for affirmative to not. Because a two-to-one in that case is just not action.
It depends on what the motion is though.
Yeah.
If the motion is to prove. It's two to one. There's no approval. If it's a motion to deny. It's two to one.
It's a failed motion to deny. It's, it's a non-approval of a motion to deny.
Again, I brought it up because every previous training we've had, it says it takes three to approve, but we've never actually discussed, does it take three to deny?
I don't think, I don't remember the. Three to approve.
Oh, yeah, through, yes, it would be three through.
Yeah, I, I, I was, but I was always, I think, something when that was brought, it also would not take three to.
Anything other than.
Well, here we go, yeah, let's just make sure here that we're, you know, I didn't over summarize the, the piece. Uh, of it here, so here's your rules, to pass or deny any variance, appeal or other official action. Required by the zoning ordinance, a vote of the majority of the total membership, three members of the ZBA is required. So that would include a motion to deny.
So even if we have a quorum. We couldn't effectively deny.
Unless you all agreed.
Right.
Right.
Say that again.
Which means that they would be well advised not to adjourn the hearing.
But that's also not an affirmative approval, it's just inaction.
Oh.
Takes three to go either way, anything less than three means.
Yeah.
We're stuck and it's got to come back.
I don't think so. I think that's a denial. Yeah, I really do.
I, I defer.
Well, I tell you what, we can make this a uh research project.
Let's do some flow charts and.
Do what?
Do some flow charts.
No, just send it over to Mariah and let her deal with it.
Why don't you uh prepare an email and I'll forward it to her, or you send it to her.
Okay.
I, I'm voting for you to need three for either, just based on the way the uh. The rules are written.
That's what it sounds like. Yeah.
I'll stop asking questions.
No, this is great, no, this is fantastic. There's plenty of stuff here I can just breeze through, you know, this is, it's all about what you're interested in. So of course, uh, we're, we're subject to the Open Meetings Act. Uh, we've already talked about what a quorum uh. Can't do without a quorum, uh. But a quorum also can't meet outside of this room or outside of your meeting uh to talk about official business, make any decisions. It's not unusual that you maybe want to send around some emails or go as a group for a site visit, but as a. Quorum, you should not be doing that. And, and I like, your, your rules are very nice, by the way. You're some of the best rules I've seen of any zoning board I've.
Well, as, as far as visiting a site visit, we're all on our own.
Yeah, and your rules specifically say each ZBA member individually, so that's, that's a good protection.
And we won't be paid. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
So, yeah, and, and.
But we always do. And I. My, my experience uh with the zoning board is that we really do not do emails.
Yeah.
Uh, I, it, on the rarer cases when I've got one. I've advised whoever sent to me that it's. Something to be avoided.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, it's not unusual, maybe, maybe staff sends you an update about the meeting agenda or something, but, but is this the urge to reply all? And start discussing.
Yeah.
The agenda, yeah, okay, good.
No, we're pretty good. I, I don't know, what do you, was there? Is there an issue with us?
We're fine.
I'm fine.
So conflicts of interest is a section that I normally roll out some hypotheticals and such, but your rules are so clear. Uh, it's got all the, the answers very, very nicely laid out, so this is, this is what I'm going to uh. Maybe not spend as much time on as I, as I would with other boards kind of. Contemplating what is or isn't a conflict of interest, but your ordinance and your rules are very, very clear that uh any. Time you have a conflict of interest, it needs to be uh disclosed. Failure to disqualify is malfeasance in office, so uh. So a, a strong language there. If you believe you have a conflict, it needs to be disclosed and, and then the board will, will take a vote on whether to excuse you. And if that happens, then uh you need to leave uh the, the dais and it, the rules, your rules even say leave the room entirely unless it affects your constitutional right to participate. But at this point, as a zoning board member and declaring a conflict. You aren't supposed to be then coming up to the podium and advocating for a proposal or certainly not representing. Uh, an applicant. It's rare that that comes up, but um it can.
Well, what about the case where one of our neighbors is.
Yeah.
Proposing something weird and, and we do want to oppose it. What's, what's the practice that we should follow for that?
I, I would say resist. Well, because you are a member of the zoning board. I think the, the, the concern is that by participating in. The, the comment for or against it, you're. You're acting contrary to the fact that you have a conflict. You're participating in the discussion still, even as a private citizen.
Well. Uh, I, I'm really talking about. In the course of the public hearing, speaking as an interested party.
I don't think that would be. Yeah, I. It, it, it's, it's a conflict because I get where you're going, because you are an interested party and you. You, you know, you, you want to do that, but.
Never happened.
It, it runs contrary to the zoning. Board of Appeals rules too, and the whole idea of abstaining from the discussion if you have a conflict. Because what does it look like when, when the chairperson of the board is. Recused, but now is coming up. I mean, there will always be that argument, even if it's not true, that there may have, there's. Greater weight being placed on that viewpoint because he is the chairman of, or, you know, any of you are members of the board and. So they have, the appearance of bias could be there, and that's really what the conflict of interest rules are all about, weeding out. But it is a tricky situation that if. But it is a tricky situation that if you are a member, or if you, if, you know, it, it is your neighbor, but i- in that case. Have someone represent you, I think is your best option. Talk on your behalf.
Speaking on my behalf, I'm too cheap.
Well, you don't have to pay the person to speak on your behalf.
Yeah, you wouldn't.
Um, so the issue of. Uh, political contribution. Has come up in some of our other boards. Not the ZBA. But. When might that? Be determined to be a sufficient conflict of interest, and we've waited, tried to decide in different situations.
So. So this would be something that really the, the, the board, the township board would be facing more so than the zoning board, we're talking about. Candidate for your campaigns, yeah.
Well, changing a little bit, how about if an applicant comes asking for a variance? And you have made a political contribution, or one of the. One of the zoning board has made a political contribution to the applicant, is that sort of what we're talking about?
Could be.
Well, if the person made a political contribution to the applicant. It's not that the person who made the contribution has any financial interest in the subject matter of the appeal. They spent money on this, obviously, the First Amendment right to free speech through. Donations comes into play, so you can't really penalize a person for making a contribution.
Is that really what you're talking about, though, Pat?
I was asking a general.
No, I, I see where you're going too, yeah, it's, it's, it's something I don't have to. Deal with that often. Fortunately, but. Yeah, I don't have a good answer to that question at this point, you know, in terms of. When that would be. Clearly a conflict, and I don't know that it always is, I mean, in, in political office. You get contributions, and, and that's part of the system, so unless it's a particularly huge donor. Or, you know, outside of. Being, being, if there's evidence that it was offered with the expectation of a given, give and take. And that would be the only situation where I think it would be just per se a, a problem.
Yeah, and sometimes the donations are small, but sometimes they're. Little over a thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that there's anything, just as a matter of law, that would say that that would require abstention on dealing. With some issue that that person or entity raises. So in terms of the zoning board, specific rules, again, yours are extremely clear as to when conflicts exist. The, the most obvious choice is always when you have a. Direct interest in the application or a relative or family member of yours is involved in a request. That you have to make a decision on, if you have some sort of business or financial. Interest in the request or in the person bringing it. Uh, if you, this is, this is an interesting one, yours is very clear in saying that there's a conflict if. You own or have a financial interest in neighboring property, and even goes so far as to define a neighboring property as. Any property within the three hundred foot radius, this is one I often do a hypothetical on because. If you live next door to the property, there's probably a, a good argument that you have a potential conflict of interest there, but if you just live down the street. When I sat on the planning commission, it just so happened that I, I was, I was vice chair and I had to chair the meeting. The day that there was a rezoning, a block and a half down the street from my house, where they were trying to rezone a. House behind a little strip mall to a parking district, and they wanted to tear down the house, and, and I, I just. So I'm cheering the meeting, and I'm also offering my own firsthand experience of dealing with the terrors of that. Little intersection as it was, and, and why we shouldn't have parking creeping into our neighborhood, and some people thought that maybe I had a conflict, but. I didn't see it that way, and it, and there was nothing in, in the law that would say that I per se had a conflict, just because it's down the street, we live in the community, so that we're just making decisions on. But in your case. In three hundred feet, if you're within it, it's, it's a conflict, so that should be disclosed. And then, yeah, this, this catchall of is there a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest? And I think that's where, you know, the issue that, that you raised comes into play, and again, I think the neighbor thing. Takes press, takes, takes priority, but are there circumstances, maybe it is the. Political donation that you're concerned about. When in doubt, disclose, or, you know, have the conversation with your, your township attorney in advance of the meeting, or amongst. Yourselves, short of a quorum. To the extent that you can to, to kind of see where you may be at on that, and ultimately upon disclosing, it's, it's the decision of the board to either. Find a conflict or not. And this is self-explanatory, next on the, the hearing procedures, again, yours are very nicely set forth, very, very structured. So I'm not going to. Go through every one, but, but I'm, I'm intrigued too, when it comes to any sort of communications that you may have had leading up to. Your meeting, emails, conversations with the petitioner, your rules are very clear that those need to be disclosed and brought into the record, which I think is a, a very good practice, so you're. You're in a good place there, and then I think it's pretty common when you do your own investigation and talk about your site visit and all that, but here the, the rules are expecting it. Public comment, do you, do you get many meetings where there's a large number of public commenters? Well, that's good, so, yeah. Makes for shorter meetings, that's for sure. So. If you do need to, though, you can always place a time limit on how long an individual is allowed to speak, but lots of discretion written into your rules as to. Allowing petition, the petitioner to get additional time, or to allow a member of the public to come up a second time after everybody else who wanted to has spoken. Uh, and. Another thing that I, you know, once in a while I'll see in, in communities and practice, and here it's even written in your rules, that if there's a large number of people who are representing the same viewpoint, they can speak through a representative. That's a good practice, if you, certainly if you have something like sheets coming in or something, and you're, you're gonna have a three hour public hearing, that can be useful, but. You know, when it comes to these public hearings, you know, for as much as we talked about an aggrieved party and going to court, anybody can come and speak at these, these public hearings, I mean, they need to stay on topic, it's certainly within the.
We'd never enforce that.
Yeah, what's that?
Stay on topic.
Yeah. Do you have a?
As far as public comment, in the public comment portion of the meeting.
Within the public hearing on the appeal or the general public comment?
Public comment, we've never.
Oh, yeah, the general public comment period.
I misunderstood.
Anything goes, but the public hearing itself on the, the variance request, that, that should stay on topic. Um, so anybody can speak, and, and, you know, my, my main advice when it comes to time limits or the speak through a representative thing. Establish that at the beginning of the hearing, you don't want to be thirty minutes into the hearing and decide all of a sudden you're going to be enforcing a time limit when. Other people have been speaking for six minutes at a time, cause then you start getting into some concerns about whether. You, you're potentially committing an Open Meetings Act violation by unevenly administering the public comment period. Um, and hopefully you never have to remove a person from a meeting, but it. Resist the urge unless, I mean, somebody has to really be doing something horrible, and, and it's unfortunate that we have to wait for that moment to come. But unless they're really disrupting the order of the meeting where you, you can't hear yourselves talk. Shouldn't be throwing people out of the meeting.
If you do state the rules, and you state that they can speak through a representative, but you don't. Request that they do, even if they're gonna say the same thing or similar comments. Then you can't do anything, right?
Right, uh, yeah. Yeah, the speaking through the representative is. It's, it's a weird thing because everybody has their right to speak. But I, I, that's, that is one thing that I have seen, and I've never seen it challenged, I'm not saying it never has been, but, you know, if you have a large. Turnout and you do get an hour or two in and everyone's saying the same thing, I have seen chairs say, how many other people are here that agree with this viewpoint, or. When you come up, can you please, if you have something new to add? And again, I haven't seen a challenge, but there's enough lawyers out there to.
We usually know before you.
Yeah, yeah.
We do, but with other meetings, we don't always know.
Yeah. Speakers should be directing their comments to the chairperson, not other meeting attendees. Wanna turn it into a Q and A with members of, of the audience. Uh, you know, then when it comes to your engagement of the public, nothing requires you to have a Q and A with a member of the public. Seen, seen many, or certainly. Primary legislative bodies who just sit, receive the public comment and move on, but with your role as the fact finder, it's a little different, I mean, I think. If there's something you need to follow up on, follow up on it, obviously the. Members of the public who are going to be most affected by a potential variance can often bring very useful information about. For example, traffic patterns at the end of your block, or drainage patterns, or, or whatever, and, and, and that's what. You're here for, to hear whatever sort of evidence they have to bring forward, that, that might get you thinking one way or another. So. Once we get through the public hearing piece of it, and the petitioners had their chance for rebuttal. Uh, then we're going to start getting into the process of making of the motion. Once you close the public hearing, I, my, my general advice is. Don't take any more public comment, you know, you always get the person, wait, can I add something to this?
We do, and we try to, try to.
Yeah.
Not allow that, but occasionally it, it has, something does come up. But there is one, another thing, perhaps I'm jumping ahead.
That's fine.
Um, you say that after the public hearing, we should move right to a motion. Our practice has been that we do close the public hearing, but then we discuss.
Right.
Uh. Before anybody makes a motion.
Right.
And sometimes quite a while.
Yeah.
Uh, and it very occasionally, we have to ask another question of the applicant, so I guess technically when that has happened, we've reopened the public hearing. For the brief period, but I don't.
I mean, yes or no, because it's, it's. You're just following up on something based on the discussion you're having amongst yourselves, that you want another piece of information, and you're inviting the applicant up, or a member of the city staff up, or consultant up. To, to address that question, so I, I wouldn't necessarily view that as, as reopening the public hearing. Uh, and, and that's why I put on here in practice, after the public. Comment is closed, it, it's very normal to have those discussions and to still have some questions for the applicant or the staff. And again, certainly have never seen that challenged. As you're having those conversations. If it looks like you're heading toward possibly postponing, adjourning a decision. Uh, one, as you're finding possible flaws in the plan that you're reviewing, or. The missing information that you need in order to make your decision. Be careful about how you articulate what it is you're looking for and how it may shape your decision, because I'm especially lately seeing a, a number of, of lawsuits, and they're not. Getting anywhere, but where people are claiming, oh, well, the. So and so on the, the board said that if I bring this information, they're going to approve it, and, you know, that you wanna avoid. Making it look like you're promising an outcome, if they just fix this piece of their plan, or cut down their variance requests by a little percentage. Uh, or bring an additional piece of information, so I think, uh, obviously you need to identify what's missing, or what's, uh, unagreeable with the proposal, but, but avoid. Making it look like you're promising an approval if they fix it. All right. So as we get to the motions. Factual findings are critical. The zoning board always has to cite specific facts obtained at the hearing that, that demonstrate that the legal standard you're dealing with has or hasn't been established by the applicant. And we've been talking about some of those sources of fact, and that's all the stuff that's going to be in the certified record. It's the application, it's the ordinance requirements, it's the qualities of the property, it's. Information you obtained through public comment, through your site visits, all of these things can be, uh, facts that you can point to.
You mentioned in this, one of the bullet items is staff reports. Talk a little more about that, we, we usually have a zoning consultant.
Sure.
Who has summarized it, and they won't, they won't say whether, how we should rule, but they. Have reasoning or point out things that might be deficient.
Right.
I mean, we can still use that, or?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, let, let that guide you, and then I think as you're, uh, sitting here. You can, you can. Dive into those recommendations, or, 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 whatever, whatever points the staff is making, and. You know, find out if they are concerning enough where you need more information or, or not. You know, I've certainly seen situations where boards have disagreed with the staff, that something is or isn't deficient, and so that's a conversation.
Are those, those are considered part of the record, though?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
By the way, is our staff member here?
No.
Okay, I'm curious.
She was good to watch.
So. Speaking, so here's a few hypotheticals for you, and I'm guessing from your rules, the way that it tells you to structure your motions, maybe, maybe we, we. Are doing all right there, but. Looking at the strength of various types of motions, so. When I'm sitting with zoning boards and other boards, you know, you see the whole spectrum, and so sometimes you just see a. A motion that the request of the applicant be approved or denied. And this would be one of the weakest forms of motions, because it just doesn't cite any facts, it doesn't cite the standards, and. Getting now back into what we were talking about with the court review, the judge will look at this and say, well, what is it? That the board saw is the reason for approving or denying the motion, so. So that's the, that's one that could, if, if challenged, land a case back in front of you. And sometimes you have something that's really routine and there's nobody in the audience, and that, you know, you know that it's not.
But we don't do that.
Yeah, okay.
We, we actually. There, there is a form motion that, that recites each criteria for. What we have to. Make a ruling on, according to our ordinance.
This is good.
That the consultant actually will put in the end of the report, either way, you know, you can do approve or deny, and. Uh, I, I think in years, way years past, maybe that's happened, but.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful.
In the most recent time period. We, we do struggle, I, I think, with trying to articulate facts to support a particular finding. But. I think we've gotten a lot better.
I was gonna say, we're starting to, to do the statement of facts before we even get to the motion, just to make sure that. The group participating agrees that these are the statements.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And we, we will, we will request. Uh, changes or additions to a motion. Changes or additions to a motion. If there's certain things that's been. Uh, missed or should be included.
Yeah, well, then then you may not.
Or prime.
My help on the motions. So, you know, my second suggestion here was, you know. Getting back to sort of that historical precedent idea, just because you have or haven't approved a particular type of variance in the past, isn't necessarily. Uh, a a reason for making, uh, the same decision in in the new case. So you you want to be. Uh, very focused on what the facts of this issue is, uh, that may make it, uh, unique. Um, another motion that's fairly, uh. Very lightweight is when you're just reciting, uh, the standard of review, but as you're, if you're doing your own. Factual findings, uh, then.
Usually.
Well, on your way.
Usually don't say anything about whether it meets the. The, uh. The, uh, map. The zoning. Or or whether it conflicts with the. General, uh.
The master plan?
Master plan. We we don't.
Yeah.
Often gets. Just, it doesn't affect the master plan.
Right.
There.
Right.
And that's a little consequence, I think.
Yeah. Uh, so this, speaking of the staff reports, I knew this one was gonna be coming up here, uh. So I moved that the request be approved or denied for the reasons stated in the staff reports and on the record. Um. You know, it's an interesting one because and and. The parallel to this, I think, would be just simply adopting a finding of fact that correlates with what's in the plan or or within the consultant's report. Uh. I think it's, uh, it's better than the than the weaker motions, and I think it it does point the court to what it is you're thinking, but. We had this, uh, this terrifying case of the Court of Appeals in in twenty eighteen. It was, um, out of Traverse City. That was some of the development up there. And, uh, there it was, it was a planning commission. Where they did the for the reasons in the staff report approach to making a motion. And the Court of Appeals said that was not adequate. Because the Court of Appeals wanted to see why the planning commission adopted the facts of the staff report. And to take evidence supporting those facts. So the staff report itself was not evidence gleaned by the zoning board. Um, or the planning commission in that case, so. At the time, it seemed like that decision, uh, felt extreme. Uh, I don't know that I've seen another one that necessarily. Is rejecting a for the reasons in the staff report approach, but we, I I am seeing a steady train of cases coming down. Where there are remains happening because of inadequate motion or inadequate record. So. It sounds like you're already well on your way to to avoiding that here, but I I can't stress enough to stay, stay on that path. Because it's.
Probably the toughest single thing.
It is. Not every. Not every record is full of fascinating facts to turn to. All right. There was the burden of proof, uh, that's where I snuck it in there. So just remember, it is the applicant's burden to prove, uh. That the standards for granting the appeal or variance are satisfied. I. Think it's great to even just go through each of the standards. How do you satisfy this one? How do you say it? Make your argument. Um, but it's, it's the ZBA's responsibility to identify why the evidence does or doesn't satisfy the standards. So that's motions in general. Any other comments or questions on motions? So, uh, very quickly, since this isn't common, uh, in front of you, administrative appeals, if you are ever called upon. To review a decision of the zoning official, um, you're you're looking to see whether there was some error of law. Uh, in any order requirement, decision or determination made by, uh, the administrative official or body. Uh, and in this role, you're you're acting much like a court does when it's reviewing one of your decisions. Except in this case, you're reviewing an administrative decision and you you have the same options, affirm. Uh, in whole or in part, reverse in whole or in part, or modify the decision. Uh, and, uh, just like with your variance, uh, requirements, uh. Your rules ask you to list your pertinent facts and, uh, the conclusion of. Or decision of the board and the the reasons why the facts support the conclusion. As far as the case law goes, when reviewing these sorts of administrative appeal decisions. Uh, basically, we're looking for whether, uh, the administrative decision was arbitrary and capricious, uh. Based on some erroneous finding of fact, was an abuse of discretion or just a flat out, uh, erroneous interpretation of. The zoning ordinance. So really, um, these administrative appeals are are fairly mechanical. To just see if there really was a mistake that had been made. I dealt with one, uh, within the past year where a person was upset that. The zoning administrator, uh, determined that a a use. Was not within, uh, proposed use was not within the, uh, you know, permitted use or within the definition of a permitted use. And said they were gonna have to go for a, you know, a variance. And and he, they, instead of going for the variance, they appealed the decision that they need to go to a variance. And the judge said, no. No, they they read the, the zoning administrator read the rule right. And then they went for the variance and lost and went back to court and lost again. That was a success story. Well, we've really been implied, you know, implicitly talking about your variance standards throughout the whole evening here, uh, so, um. Yeah, this is just kind of gonna tie it all together here. So you can approve, you can deny, you can approve with. additions. And here we were just talking about the motions, the statement of facts and the rationale and reasons for the conclusion. So you have your five factors, um, the exceptional and extraordinary circumstances, unique to the property. Is the variance necessary for, uh, preservation of a property right possessed by others in the same zone or area? Uh. Would the variance be materially detrimental to the public welfare? Would it affect, uh, the purpose or objectives of the master plan? And, uh, absent exceptional circumstances, um, whether the circumstances or provisions. Result from the actions of the applicant or his predecessor in title, which is basically the question of self-created hardships. So. Yeah, I, as you're going through your. Your motion, just tying the facts as best as you can to each of these criteria is the ultimate goal. Um. All five of these criteria have to be satisfied in order for the variance to be granted. The failure of any one of them would support denying the variance. I think you're right, though. The master plan one is kind of a uneasy one to just kind of skate by because it's either consistent with the master plan or it's not. I mean, how much fact binding are you going to?
So far, but I can see it happening. Someone could come essentially asking for a, um, a zoning change in effect.
Mm-hmm.
Could do it.
We had some areas where the zoning ordinance is not consistent with Dexter.
We have.
Railroad tracks near Dexter.
Which one?
Commercial lots near the railroad tracks in Dexter from the A and W N. The ordinance say you have to tie into the sewer system, but there is no sewer system up there.
Hmm, oh, that's a planning commission thing.
But it it's again, it gets into, there are things.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Conflict.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do this.
That was my.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, that can happen. We've never, never seen one yet. I can't.
Planning commission had one.
Well, yeah, well, you would. I mean, that that's. Would be understandable.
The issues.
You you'd get it before we would.
Yeah, the issues have come up on on board.
Or deny, whatever, yeah.
So how much do you, uh, get into debates about self-created hardship?
I think all the.
Come up off it. It is very common. Yeah, very common in in pretty much every board I've ever worked with. Uh, so I've I've put together a few hypotheticals and now I mean, it's cheating here because you have the whole thing in front of you. So you can see where I'm gonna go with each of these, but, um. Uh, just in terms of a a general example, uh, I suppose that a company, uh, buys a property. To construct a billboard that would be larger than the size allowed by the zoning ordinance, the company seeks. Height and dimensional variances for the billboard. Is that a self-created hardship?
If they buy it knowing that the the zoning.
Know.
Prohibits that, yeah, that is.
Yeah, opposing viewpoints.
I already read it.
I know, yeah. So. Yeah, I always like to lead with this case because I think this one is the one that always is the, oh, my goodness, moment. So there was a case, uh, twenty eighteen now, where Detroit sued its own zoning board over this issue and. Uh.
These things happen.
And.
Comes up.
And and then basically, so, uh, you know, the the argument was in in favor of the self-created hardship. Was that, yeah, through their own actions, they bought property knowing it wasn't suitable for this use and they were going to have to get a variance. Uh, in this case, I think it was a use variance. Um, and and it's. Self-created, but the court said, no. The court said that. It's all about whether the applicant has physically altered the property. Uh, and I think the key language here is that there is no evidence in the record that that, in this case, International Outdoor was the name of the company. Uh, did anything but purchase the property and a landowner may seek any variance the law permits and should not be limited. Just because they purchased the piece of property knowing the city's ordinance has barred a particular use.
Is that a public opinion?
Uh, yes.
But, um. Isn't it self-created when they, it not, it's not the act of buying the property with that knowledge. But when they come in and they 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 say, we want to build it this size.
Well, so, yeah, so. As I'm talking about the self-created hardship. I'm focused just on that piece. It's not to say that there wouldn't be other reasons that would be principled for denying it, but it's. The idea that they bought it with this knowledge itself is not going to be. The one criteria that they fail that blows up the whole thing. You're going to need to find something else. So. So, yeah, and 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 I I deal with billboard cases all the time, so. And sign, sign ordinances are a hotbed for variants. I don't know if you get, get a lot of them, but, um.
Yeah.
Planning commissioner, the board handles that stuff. We don't get it here in the zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, it's clean.
So in.
We've had them. The PETA place.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
We had a billboard?
The PETA, oh, not a billboard, it was sign ordinance.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, yeah. We did get, of course. Build the building right next to it. We could have blocked it all off, so.
And the same rationale goes for somebody who wants, uh, you know, a bigger porch or extra pavement coverage or whatever. And you know, if they want it just to want it. That's not self-created hardship, but it also doesn't mean they have to be approved. They still have to show that there's some. Practical difficulty that's that's driving their need. And in the case of the signs, uh, we've got lots of. Wonderful opinions, especially in the past few years. Uh, I I had a Sixth Circuit case that just came out and said the sign's too big. Period. I mean, it's, this isn't, you can't sue over just because you want a bigger sign. So. It may not be self, the self-created hardship standard, but. They otherwise don't prove their case. It's not too bad. Um. So here's, uh, I've got a couple, uh, related examples. So, uh, suppose a residential property owner owns a a single lot with a single house on it. Uses it consistent with the zoning ordinance, but later splits the lot. And wants to construct a house on the new lot in violation of of the current setback in height requirements. Um, where it otherwise would be, uh, too small of a lot to build a functional house. Uh, but the zoning ordinance requirements, uh, are the same today as they were before the split was completed. Is that a self-created hardship? You know, it's a mouthful.
Let me ask a different question.
Yeah.
Usually to split, if you're splitting it, you don't meet the zoning requirements. That's gotta come to the ZBA to get the agreement to split it first. So by default, if the split was agreed to, then it can't be a self-created problem because.
Yeah, well, that's, that's okay, yeah. You're throwing in an extra fact to my hypo. But no, I see exactly what you're saying. I think that's, that's a fair point, that if, if it was agreed to, then, uh, then then arguably, but.
But I mean, the zoning board could have said, it's okay, you can create that lot, that doesn't mean it's buildable. And then when someone comes along.
Yeah, a lot of times with lot splits, that's how it is too. Um. Particularly when they're doing it administratively, but eh, this example is is typically the quint, the key example of a self-created hardship. When a person does make some tangible change to the land that causes it to be out of compliance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, but 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 no, your point is well taken about if it did go through, uh, like especially zoning board approval. If it's just administrative approval and it says, you know, there's no guarantee, um, that isn't company about the person to to know. And then number three here is just the flip side of it. If the zoning ordinance is what's, uh, what's changed. If the split took place at a time when both pieces would have been buildable, but the zoning ordinance changed later. Well, then that's not a self-created hardship. It's the zoning ordinance that's causing that problem. And and then that's getting into, uh, you know, at the tail end of this. I have a little bit on on non-conformities and non-conforming lots of record. Uh, that's really what we're getting into with the example at number three.
We need to get there.
We we.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can discuss that, uh, cause we run into that.
Yeah, that comes up for you.
Okay, yeah, then we'll, uh. We'll talk. Okay, this is, this is just another one where they kind of knew, um. The issues, so, um, I think. Yeah, I think we've pretty much covered that. I think, you know, the point of these examples is just. Self-created hardship is a lot narrower than is commonly believed. It's just really about the way the land has been manipulated. And you you know, it flows from the fact that the zoning ordinance is a general document. It can't contemplate every possible situation. And it is conceivable that somebody will be in a circumstance where they they need a variance, you know. Knowing that what what they want to do needs a variance, but it's all a point of how they plead their case as to why. They are an exception rather than. Whether they should be. Within the general rule.
But what you're saying, though, is that even if it's not a self-created hardship. That that doesn't excuse the rest of the analysis.
Exactly.
Still, that doesn't mean you've got to grant the variance. It just allows you to get.
Exactly. It's just you really want to key the fact finding into those other standards. So here, I I won't read it, but this is moving toward a motion that would be much better for the court, and it sounds like that's what you're doing.
That that's what we're, we've been trying to do for the last several years, was to get motions that speak to that. That that's pretty good. In fact, I'd probably want more, please.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is.
Question.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's, I'm just talking about that.
Um. Can you talk a little bit about this question of what is an, uh, an important property right? Uh, that is enjoyed by other people or, uh, it, I think that one of the things we come down to a lot. You know, someone comes in, they want to build a swimming pool, or they want to make a two-car garage when there's only room for a one-car garage. Unless they violate setback. And they say, well, this is an important property right to have a two-car garage or what, how do you analyze that?
I I think that's looking more at like, what are the neighborhood factors? Um, you know. If you're looking around the rest of the community, now this is almost where a precedent sort of thing comes into to play. If if the the rest of the neighborhood has two-car garages and you're the only one that doesn't, then maybe there's an argument there. Look, my neighborhood, this is, this has become an established property right in this neighborhood. And I should be able to enjoy that too, or, you know, other people are getting ex, you know, extensions on their house or whatever, um. I think that's really what it's kind of looking at.
And then the next step is the undue hardship question. You know, um, it's gonna cost, I I could, I could cite it here. But if I had to do that, I'd have to cut down a big tree and it would cost. Further, it would cost, you know, fifty thousand dollars more than if I put it here, which requires a variance.
Right, and that.
Realize those.
That could very well be an undue hardship or an exceptional circumstance type of a situation. As compared to, say, a person who's just saying they want the economic return. If there's something, you know, that, because that's ultimately what variances are are about. What is peculiar about the property? That's putting them in the position of locating the garage or. That's putting them in the position of locating the garage or the addition or whatever where they are as opposed to where it shouldn't. And, um, a- and, and, yeah, I think that's exactly the type of thing I, that would be valid to consider.
So i- you think it would be valid?
I think so.
An example here, um, we had a case that, uh, where someone wanted to put in a solar array. And the only way to make an efficient solar array on the ground, uh, would violate setbacks. Um, they could have made a smaller array and put it on a roof and not violated setbacks, but that because of the shade and the various other physical factors, that it wouldn't have made any sense to do that. So really, the only way that it made sense in that situation, uh, would be decided in a way that violated setbacks, but.
Yeah, it, it's, that sounds like one of those situations where both outcomes probably was supported by competent material evidence.
Three, two vote.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, how would you analyze that?
Yeah, well, I think probably how you, I didn't even know how you all analyze it, but I'm guessing that you probably did it exactly how I would. Uh, but, you know, I think everything that you said, uh, is certainly, uh, you know, part of the analysis. You know, the fact that it's not, uh, you know, if it wasn't feasible in the way that meets zoning and then that, you know, that would be weighing reverse, but then the flip side of it, it'll maybe they need to find a different site. Um, that maybe it isn't a, a circumstance that's, you know, inherent in the property itself or, or a neighborhood. So it, it's.
That was the discussion.
Yeah.
That's pretty much what we were talking.
Yeah.
It's, but I think, uh, Diana is kind of going towards, is that an important property?
Right.
And.
Maybe not everybody gets to have solar.
Yeah, I mean.
To make that make, make wide range of properties.
Yeah, uh, and the same thing that popped up once before was for, uh, the, uh, the automatic generator. We had one of those and the question became, one little, we, we approved that one, I think unanimously. But one of the issues that was brought up was is having a, uh, you know, a automatic on generator of important property. And I said, I said, I remember saying, it's getting pretty close. It might be, yeah.
It might be.
You know.
Yeah, they're very common and the concerns about the power grid.
But the points well taken. What's an important property rate? Because.
But.
Cause we can go on and on about it.
Yeah.
But I think you said that, that the economic concerns had to do it's with economic, uh, benefits from the property as opposed to the cost of two alternative.
Yeah, no, I think they are two different things. If a person is, you know, it, it's not uncommon for owners to say, oh yeah, I want to maximize the value of my property. I have a bigger this, you know, I can get more return. But, um, you know, I think when it comes to the question, when it comes to the costs of citing something within the confines of the zoning ordinance. That's, that's a little different, so.
And so it was something that says it would just cost me because of the physical layout of the property. It would co, I, the only way I could comply is by doing something that would cost a high-hyungry amount more. That you, you think that for us, that's a valid consideration?
Yeah, I think it would be. I mean, I think that sometimes goes to the issue.
For us to know.
Sometimes goes to the issue of the size of the variance too. Now, I, I, again, maybe sometimes the property is just not the right property for the project. You know, if you, you know, if you need a property where the, you know, if there's apartment complex or something and they have to have a certain scale in order for it to be economically feasible, well, then maybe that's just not the right development on that site. But, um, but those types of issues do come into play.
Don't we have something, isn't there something in the ordinance that says something about economic hardship is not, um, a valid consideration?
I don't remember.
Well, I don't think I saw it some, a, a lot of ordinances do specifically call it out. But I didn't see it written quite so directly, but. But it's, it's not. It's, it typically is not.
How are we talking?
I mean, in, in terms of just the economics of. Again, as dis- distinguished from something about the, the property that's making of, of conforming development more difficult. There, there's a line between it.
Okay. I mean, like the hotel that wanted to come in and said.
Right, right.
Not, we can't make the, the.
All right, yeah.
Unless it's four stories and our.
Say, who cares? But, right, no, that's, that's not.
And they came back later and it's, well.
Yeah.
Okay, that.
But until that, I mean, that's the kind of thing you're saying. We don't have to.
Exactly. Cause I matter.
It's too far. It was costing fifty thousand dollars.
That's true in the administrative, in the zoning variance context. It's true in the takings context that a person isn't guaranteed. They don't have a constitutional right to maximize the return on their property. Um, and so we, you know, we fight about those things in litigation all the time, but, um, right, that's, that's not a slam dunk argument in favor of variance. All right, in the interest of, of moving along to, uh, some of the other things later. At the, we're moving, we're doing quite well there. Um, we've covered quite a bit of these, you know, kind of practical advice, uh, items here as we've gone along. Um. I, I dropped that little point that not everybody has to discuss the reasons for their vote, but it sounds like you do a really nice collective approach to the, the findings of fact. I think that's fantastic. I think that's really, really good. Um. If you have a situation where it looks like you're going to be the lone dissenter, I just tend to caution. Obviously, you're entitled to speak your mind and say what you want to say, but especially if it looks like it's something that's going to become a, a point of litigation, you might not want to say too much. That could end up taking the, the, you know, it's not that the comments of any one zone, zoning board member carry any, any legal significance, particularly when they're the lone dissenter, but you know, it can lead plaintiff's attorneys on, uh, a, a tangent. Uh, it probably will guarantee that you're going to be deposed in a lawsuit if it turns into a takings claim or something like that. So just, um, just be thoughtful. What you're, in, in your comments. Uh, now this, this went back, we already had this debate about the, uh, the tie or a failure of a motion. Uh, you know where I'm falling on that in, in this case. So, uh, th- this actually comes up quite a bit. So suppose you, you have the full board, forget the, um, the three-person thing for the moment. Um. Uh, if you have a four or five of you here and, uh, so you have a motion to approve sitting on the table, it fails. Well, is that a denial? Technically, no. It's a failed motion to approve. And I think where this really comes into play is we think about the court's review of your decisions. If you have a motion to approve and you've set out findings of fact as to why the variance should be approved. Well, you don't have findings of fact as to why it should be denied. You haven't come to a consensus on that. And so it's possible that if you just roll on interpreting the failure of a motion to approve as a denial, uh, that may not make it through if it ends up getting challenged. So my, my advice is to then follow up a failed emotion to approve with a motion to deny. And then reset the factual findings in order to make the record clear. Cause once again, you're communicating to a potential future judge why you made the decision that you did.
But it's not gonna get a second.
A motion to deny. Well, if, well, if the motion. If it was a, it was a three to two vote, say, to deny a motion to a.
I'm sorry, I was thinking two to one.
Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah, no. Yeah, no, and, and that, in the, in the two to one situation, I think the next step is you just re, you have another hearing where you have more members.
I still say that that's, but we'll find out.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
And.
All right, I didn't think, I quickly answered you that.
In the planning commission, they have voted to. A motion to approve didn't pass and they treat that as a denial, don't they?
But there's a difference. The planning commission is only making recommendations to the board. The ZBA is actually making legal decisions. Yeah, so we can, we can make what if, we don't make an emotion to approve, it still goes to the board and the board can decide to overrule us or make their own decision.
Yeah, that's a fair distinction. Um. And, and look, in practice, there are, you know, plenty of zoning boards that just stop at the failed motion to approve. But I'm just warning from a best practices standpoint, I think that could be an issue down the road if it's, it's challenged.
It would result in a remand.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
We've never had one of those. I mean, we've, even when it's close, we've even before the vote have talked, if it doesn't pass, we'll just do one to deny after.
Right, right. I think that's just the best way of sealing.
Here, right, that conversation's happened.
Do you ever do many motions with conditions?
Occasionally, but it's, it, it's, uh, we, we have done.
Yeah, I think, they, the key point on those is just make sure they're narrow, make sure they're tailored to some actual effect that the.
Yeah.
Cause the proposal is going to have, you know, oftentimes it's a matter of signage or landscaping, some, something to o- offset some negative impact.
I think, I think we do.
Yeah.
We do.
But, yeah, I mean, can't just be asking for contributions to city, uh, parks or anything. That's.
We haven't gone there yet.
All right, well, uh, so jumping ahead a little bit, we know that the effects of your decisions run with the land. Uh, variances are not personal to the owner. So just keep in mind, whatever, whatever you're doing is going to become a property right for that property. Uh, once they vest it by getting a building permit and, and constructing whatever it is they've asked to do, which, uh, they have to do within a year. Uh, I don't know if you ever, uh, get requests for variance renewals if they haven't started construction on the project.
No.
Yeah, okay.
That's something, that's, that's actually probably dealt with by a, a, a separate ordinance that, the.
We get PUD requests for renewal. Construction hasn't started within a year.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, but that's.
Yeah, that's very specific if it comes up, but usually there's some sort of reason as to why the person hasn't started it. If it's, it's valid based on market conditions or something. Usually there's nothing wrong with an extension if they've asked for it timely. Um, aesthetics, people love talking about, uh, uh, disapproving of something because it's ugly or the architecture, you know, the architecture of the house doesn't conform to the neighborhood or something. But, um, aesthetics are a valid consideration. However, uh, I would never hang a denial solely on an aesthetic determination. Uh, the case law tends to frown on that just because it is so subjective. But when you're looking at things like, uh, the, the, care of the impact on, on the neighborhood public welfare or whatever, you know, it may be a factor. Just not a sole factor. Uh, do you ever have issues with communities, uh, subdivisions with homeowners associations or deed restrictions or anything like that?
You know, and the applicant always comes up and says, well, my homeowner association has proved it, so you have to prove it. You know, that.
Not at all.
Pretty much what, what they, uh.
Yeah. Two completely separate jurisdictions, um, the fact that the homeowners association approved it is it's just not a fact, it's not a piece of your factual evidence. Uh, I mean, I don't know, maybe, uh, maybe on that property right issue or the, the character of the neighborhood, we know he's got approval, so, uh, great. But, um, but at the end of the day, you're administering the zoning ordinance and you're evaluating your standards and, and whether or not associations, uh, agreed with it. It is just not binding on you, nor are you the appeal body of, uh, of the homeowner association. If, uh, they dislike what the homeowner soc, you know. You know, if the homeowner association denied it, that's probably, uh, helpful for you in denying it as well. Um. Certainly not the review body there, so. Okay. So you wanted to get to non-conformities. I'm curious to know what your, your issues are. Cause I was tipped off that non-conformities may come up here.
Well.
I think a lot of the times it's, uh, there's a non-conforming structure and then somebody wants to come in and make uh, changes to, to that non-conforming structure, you know. It was already non-conforming, a non-conforming deck. They want to tear that down and then build a deck.
Ah, okay, that's also non-conform.
More likely they want to build something a little bigger.
Yep.
So that, and that's the real problem that comes up, I think.
Yeah.
If they want to build something bigger or.
Even if they want to build something exactly the same size, I think that that still, we have problems with the wording of the ordinance.
Right, yeah.
And then what do we do with that?
So, so let's just, let's just walk through it then, uh, to, to all get on the same page. Um. I, I think we all understand what a non-conforming use and structure is, obviously existed uh, before some zoning ordinance amendment happened that caused the structure to, yeah.
And, and I will say, man.
It's under a variance.
Almost always it's a non-conforming structure.
Yeah, because you're not even doing use variances, uh, you're right, so. Yeah. So, you know, in terms of the destruction of a non-conforming, uh, structure, um. Yeah, I wrote building, I think I meant structure. Um, you know, if it's destroyed, so I think a lot of times this is thinking about some sort of catastrophe, uh, that's you destroyed, uh, by more than fifty percent of its, uh, replacement costs. And it's not supposed to be reconstructed except in conformity with the zoning ordinance. Uh, whereas, and those destroyed fifty percent or less, uh, have to begin to be restored within three years or else the non-conforming status, uh, will be lost. Um, so in terms of, uh, the expansion of a non-conforming structure, your ordinance does have some very specific directives, uh, as to when expansion can happen. So it talks about buildings and farm operations, uh, that can be approved by the zoning official if the farming is the intended use of the structure. Uh, a single detached residential dwelling and accessory, uh, buildings can be expanded. The, uh, the zoning official's approval, if it's permitted in the zoning district and it meets yard requirements. Um, and other non-conforming structures can be expanded provided that the expansion doesn't increase the non-conformity. So in here where they're talking about expansion on a non-conforming structure, it's not necessarily talking about expanding the non-conformity. It's just building on a structure that has a, a non-conformity. And those are some cer- circumstances where that's being permitted. Um, so, yeah, talking about, I think you mentioned the ordinance language. Like once the non-conforming building or structure has been altered or, uh, to remove a non-conformity, the non-conformity is not supposed to be restored. So you do have a tension there. Certainly if it's, we see in the destruction provision that if it's destroyed by fifty, more than fifty percent by some calamity, then it can't even be reestablished. If the person is completely destroying it by removing it and then wants to rebuild it, I, it's a very good question. Do they have to then build in conformity? You know, I think the default answer would be yes, but then of course they're going to come to you for permission to keep it going. Um, and, and, uh, I, again, more of the ordinance language that points against the expansion. It flat out says, you know, no, no enlargement or expansion on a pre-existing lawful, uh, uh, you, well, this is the use that they're talking about. Um, but the same goes for the structure. Uh, do, yeah, and if you, they're not, you say you didn't get many non-conforming uses, so, uh.
No.
We have structured, yeah, I don't worry about it.
I think one, um, if you do ever get one, I just say that the issue of abandonment, the one hundred and eighty day abandonment clause, the case law is, is pretty harsh on just looking at time lapse. They're also going to be looking for indicators of whether a use has been, uh, intended to be abandoned. So, uh, if they've disconnected utilities, if the property's in disrepair, they've removed all signs of the use. Uh, they're going to be looking for some of those, uh, types of issues, but it sounds like that doesn't come up too much. Um. Repairs and maintenance, you have your ordinance section on that. Tied to ten percent of the replacement cost, periods of twelve consecutive months. So clearly there's some room for, for repair. That's not necessarily what's coming to you. Um. You do have then a specific ordinance provision that addresses zoning board review. You do have then a specific ordinance provision that addresses zoning board a review of. Expansion or substitution of nonconforming structures. And so let's just look at those and then we can can kind of talk about it in our last few minutes here. Um. So under, under your zoning ordinance, uh, the reasons for the nonconformity have to be limited to minimum lot area, lot width, required yard and off-street loading and parking requirements. It says a no nonconforming building or structure that is nonconforming because of lot coverage, floor area ratio or height requirement shall be permitted to expand without removing the nonconformity, except as permitted under a variance. So I guess, you know, if the non. If it's nonconforming because of a variance as opposed to nonconforming because of changes in. Standards and whatnot, it looks like it's making some distinction there. Um, the existing and proposed uses of such buildings and structures have to be permitted in the zoning district. Comply with district standards. And then uh, when. Evaluating uh, the request, it's asking the zoning board to look at whether the. Retention of the nonconforming building or structure is necessary for the improvement. Um, or and whether removing the nonconforming structure would cause a necessary hardship. Um, whether the proposed improvement is necessary for the continuation of activities on the property. And whether the enlarged or otherwise improved building would not adversely affect public health, safety and welfare. That the zoning board can. Require uh, modifications of a nonconformity as a condition of approval. So there there clearly are circumstances where you can. Make kind of these holistic findings that a nonconformity can continue or or be enlarged. Uh, and then there's also the issue of of substitution. That's a little different than remove and replace, I think, because that's envisioning the idea of, okay, we're taking out one noncon- one a building with one nonconforming. Characteristic and replacing it with another. The ordinance clearly uh, is not inclined to allow for that uh, or um. Nonconforming uses under cer- certain circumstances.
Right, are you saying that it's, that the ordinance says you can't do it, but doesn't that just mean that you can't do it without a variance? So that just.
Yeah, essentially, yes, yeah. So. It's nice that your ordinance has a nonconforming, nonconformity specific ZBA review criteria. That's something I don't see in every.
Well, that's the zoning ordinance, but there's also. A separate ordinances, not zoning, that particularly talk about. The desire to get rid of all nonconformities. And that that's the way.
Well.
That's the desire of. The township to do that.
Right, and and well, so that's, that's the baseline, right? The whole idea of. The zoning ordinance and and. Eliminating nonconformities is to. Gradually eliminate nonconformities. That is, that's the baseline, but the variance is obviously the escape hatch to that. And what are the circumstances in which? Even though that's the general rule. Are there circumstances when an exception is warranted?
That's exactly why the variance procedure exists.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, the, as far as, I think our our practice has always been that if someone came and wanted to just. Completely replace a building. With the same dimensions, well, I can't remember one we've ever turned down on that.
Uh, yeah, I think you're right. If you if you keep the footprint the same, we generally been. Generally. Insistent about saying yes. We've had a few where. This comes up, but there are other things that then, I mean, it was like the self-created, it it was one and then we had other points. And again, I, we get back to the, you can kind of see both arguments and it's really just what did the members of the ZBA decide as a group? Because you really could have gone either way on it depending on how you saw the other circumstances affecting. Maintaining or expanding a nonconforming building.
Right, yeah, if it's just a replace on the same footprint situation, obviously that's a less impactful. Choice. And and again, if the footprint is pursuant to a variance that has previously been granted, then that's a, that's a property right and that can continue this, but I.
We never think on that.
Yeah, yeah, and you you wouldn't because that would just be be granted as a right. But um. Yeah, that's the discussion to have and.
We've had interesting discussions on that.
Yeah.
It's a big responsibility.
It is, it's, it's the the amount of time that everybody puts into these boards, you know, people don't appreciate it. Especially when the applicants are yelling at you.
No, no, no.
Point of view, because it's big, it's big in their lives, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they they laughed much more of it.
So uh, I'm so, nonconformity was my last stop. I'm happy to talk about that more. Anything other, anything else that you might have uh. Been interested in? I've got some resources at the end of the the presentation.
Jerry, you asked me a question about, I think I related to you, Matt.
Yeah.
All right, if you're at your house and you're putting your, your. Your trash can, your cart, we have carts here, uh, out to the street and you put it in the bicycle lane. And somebody, some bicyclist hits it, are you liable? Now, that was a good question, Jerry, actually.
It's an interesting question.
But I did, I had the, I I've done thirty-four years of personal injury work. I have no idea what the answer is. But, but it's a good one. That's what, that's what makes it attorney fees.
I think there's contributory new glitches.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I have not touched a case.
Well, you're, you have to punch a car out in the street or.
Yeah.
You have to.
Is your property.
This is your thing and what you're required, have it picked up, so. Damn if I know.
Well, this is really helpful. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Uh, it's been nice chatting with you. This is exactly what I was hoping for, this this type of discussion. That's why I hope it's useful. Feel welcome to. Get in touch some point. I'm always happy to be available for a little free advice if you need it down the road.
Oh, write that down.
But if it becomes too regular, we're gonna have, you're gonna have to pay me.
Quick attacks.
All right, well, let me just move along here. Uh, the next item on the agenda is uh, public comment, people wishing to address the zoning board of appeals. On matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, each speaker shall identify him or herself by name. And such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes. To address the board, provided that if more than five citizens. Express a desire to speak, the chairperson in his or her direction may limit, actually, that should be discretion. May limit the comment. Are there any, there's, we, Ms. Brandt, there's only one here. Do you have any public comment? Are there any persons on?
Yes, Pam Boyd.
All right, Ms. Boyd, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Pam Boyd, a Sire resident. Um, having attended um, the ZBA as a resident. Interested in the procedure over the last several years, this is like one of the best uh, teaching um. Uh, episodes that you've had over the last couple of years. I really, really enjoyed this and I learned a lot, so thank you so much. Bring him back next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? On public comment?
No.
Angela?
No.
Okay. Uh, all right, then at this point I would uh, solicit a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wells, aided by Ms. Ramey. To adjourn any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposition? Uh, so we are adjourned at the eight oh.
Eight oh five, Apple time.
Apple time, okay, very good. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.